...stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Here.
Eggly.
Here.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
All right, thank you. Ron wasn't able to be here tonight, he had a procedure, medical procedure. So, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Peter Greer here to address council.
Thank you all very much. To the mayor and the village council of Hicksville. Recently, the furnace in our residence at 105 Hick Street was destroyed by flooding in our basement. Shortly before Christmas, village workers dug a large hole in front of our house, after which they traced the cause of the flood to water and/or sewage, which backed up and ended up in our basement due to tree roots clogging the line further down the street. Evidence of the village's work to correct that problem can still be seen on the corner of Hick's and Main Streets, although it is currently covered by snow. The tree roots and other debris accompanying the backup in the basement also apparently caused our sump pump to stop working, causing us to have to replace both pump and furnace. As I recall, village employees told me at the time that the problem was not due to any water or sewer lines on my property. Rather, lines under the street were responsible for the difficulty. Further, village administrator Cory Wan suggested that the whole matter stood a large chance of being paid for by the village since the clogged line that caused the problem was not our fault. I do not blame the administrator or the employees for saying what they said, and I still believe they were telling me the truth as they believed it. My wife was left with the impression that the village would keep in contact with us regarding the debacle and let us know what decisions were made. Eventually, I grew tired of waiting and contacted the administrator on my own shortly before February began. I was then told that the village had paid for the work done in front of my property and for the replacement sump pump for which I thanked them. However, as I understood it, although those from the village who had discussed the issue previously believed that the problem was not due to anything we had done, my family was still stuck with the furnace bill because Hicksville's lawyer believed it to be exclusively a homeowner's matter. I simply cannot accept this. Former mayor and clerk treasurer Diane Collins has since informed me that Hicksville Village does routine maintenance on village sewer lines. She further stated that the village purchased a sewer jet in the past for that purpose and that workers are supposed to be on a regular root grinding schedule all over town. Also, I know that in the past Hicksville has made use of a camera-type device which could be placed in sewer and water lines for the purpose of locating areas where damage such as this can be found. If this is the case, why was this problem not located and corrected before our basement flooded? Ms. Collins also believes that there have been other instances in the past where clogged sewer and water lines have caused similar problems in people's basements which were solved at no cost to the residents. If this is so, why are my family and I not being treated identically to those other people? Because lines were clogged elsewhere, I am stuck with a bill for several thousand dollars regarding a new furnace. With that thought in mind, how did I cause this to happen and what can be done about it? Sincerely, me.
I'm interjecting, thinking as much as you were committing me about this.
Yeah, we met back on January 6th, and then since that meeting, I haven't heard nothing until Cory said something tonight. But the committee had talked about paying the plumbing bills, and at that point Cory was going to turn the furnace bill over to our insurance company. We'd pay the thousand deductible, they would pay, you know, the other sixty-seven hundred bucks. Well, that was the last, well, Ron's on it too. That was the last we heard anything about it. I assumed it was all over and done with.
No, the reason I was not there, not here two weeks ago is because sometimes your schedule does not match my wife's, and I wanted her, I wanted her with me for backup.
So until tonight, when I asked Cory, well, what's Pete come for, I thought it was all done. He explained, our insurance company said, no, they don't want to pay for it.
Right.
So, we're, we're in the dark up until, call it ten till six.
Okay.
So I guess now we've got to move forward with.
I'd just like to know, I mean, I, I've written so many articles about how people had things happen to, not necessarily sewer-related, but things that were not, not something that they had done, and they didn't have to pay things like that. And I was just kind of wondering.
Yeah, what was the reason why the insurance company was refusing to cover that claim?
They, they state, with me in a municipality, we have what they call no-fault insurance. So, it's like when you had came into the office a week or two weeks ago? We talked about it. They had given you the gentleman's number. Did you end up speaking to him?
I, I could not raise him.
But, yeah, when we, when, when the committee voted on that, it was under the assumption that, that we would pay the thousand-dollar deductible.
Okay. Did, did you? Because they'd not said a thing about that at Von Daleman.
Say that again.
Did you pay that thousand-dollar deductible? Because Von Daleman hasn't said.
We would have paid the thousand-dollar deductible if our insurance was going to cover the cost of that furnace in the install. And when our insurance said, no, no dice, that we are not going to cover it, and if Mr. Greer has any questions, you know, contact, contact Mike, I believe his name is.
I thought I would try friends first.
I mean, with that being said, with the committee's decision on that, what, what's your, I mean, the committee, what are we addressed out with? You know, you were thinking the insurance was going to cover it, right? I mean, in a situation like those, or?
Yeah, at that point, we kind of just broke up discussions because we thought, well, if insurance was going to cover it, no sense. I mean, I guess we can, me to give, I don't know how long Ron's going to be laid up either.
Oh, you're right.
This probably isn't fair.
I don't remember being in that meeting.
I'm sorry.
This is probably not a fair question, but do you have any idea why, I mean, I know, I've got no-fault insurance, but, I mean, what would it take to have them change their minds? I mean, I can't imagine anything being less my fault. And you know me, Mike, I blame myself for things that happened before I was even born, so.
So I guess Charlie is here. Do you want to meet, or you guys want council to discuss? I mean, I, I don't know, I think that we should pay for it. I mean, we're going to have insurance take care of it because it wasn't his fault.
I agree. So do I, I'm not with the committee, but I agree, I mean, it's not like we paid for the sump pump. And we're showing fault by doing that.
We had, yeah, we had paid forty-two hundred dollars.
We plan on paying the thousand for it, so.
Yeah, we have paid responsibility.
Forty-two hundred already for all the work that he had done out there.
But that was just for the village side of it.
Correct.
That was his stuff.
Correct, yeah.
And, please, I don't want you to get the impression that I'm an angry, I appreciate everything you've done for me.
And you fixed our landing spot instead of having this big, huge.
Uneven driveway that we used to have.
Mud pit.
Yeah, it's, it's really hurt now.
I appreciate that, that was.
Yeah.
Did you guys get, or just one quote to replace it, or did you guys get multiple ones?
He, he had gotten the quote.
Okay.
I think it was, it's already done, right?
Uh, I'm paying in installments.
Right, have they installed it and is it?
Everything's working fine. I've been paying in, in, in installments, and at the rate I'm going, it'll be paid for in May. I don't know how much we owe at this point, to be mercilessly honest.
I would assume, when you handed me that paperwork, was it already, was it already in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Right before Christmas, it was installed.
Yeah.
About the week before, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so Cheryl would know, so you know the figure to put on the check before we vote? It was seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-eight cents? Is that in the bill?
Will you write that up?
Not, I, I frankly didn't think it was that much. I thought it was in the six thousand dollar area.
Well, is that something you can get the invoice to Cheryl?
I certainly can and I certainly will.
Yeah, that might have been with us.
I think the self was six thousand something.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
As long as Cheryl's got a good note.
I can take care of that. Okay, all right.
It's already in the packet, right? Because I thought we already had it. That's stuff you gave me.
Well, what, you paid Johnny, yeah.
Yeah, you got, you got a copy of everything Pete gave me, yes.
It's already happened.
Yep. So I make a motion that we pay for, pay Mr. Greer the money back for the furnace and pay off your installments, and then what you've paid, you'll go back.
Fine, and I, I'll, I'll get you that, that, the exact bill, hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah, I've got a copy of it.
There you go.
Okay.
All right, we're good there.
We're good there.
Okay.
Charlie seconded it. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Yep.
Uh, need I stick around?
Unless you want to listen to the rest of council, that's all I have to do.
I did that for twenty-nine years.
Press it, here, maybe you'll fire it.
I, yeah, I, let's just say I miss the old days.
Thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, so we have approval of the regular council minutes from February 3rd in your packet. Questions and comments? May I ask your permission?
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
I'm staying.
Miller?
Yes.
You have approval of bills list there in your packet.
Yeah, the finance committee was not in favor of that at all. And we brought it up numerous times, and we brought it to Cheryl, she said she had to have the money budgeted in the line item, but it doesn't mean asking spent. That's why I was double checking, because those figures looked like it was doing all that, and we weren't interested in that. Finance committee wasn't.
Right.
We weren't interested in the maintenance part, insulating, the heater in the thing, we weren't interested in that. We addressed that multiple times, I'm just letting you know.
We, we scrapped out the.
That was just three of us, not whole council, but.
Well, it was stated in our last finance meeting, too, that some of these projects going forward are going to be put on hold until we decided what direction we're going with the pool.
Some of them were on hold, like the fencing at the pavilion, that's all going to be on hold. The thirty or twenty thousand dollars for the insulating, the parks building is all on hold, so.
These are all things, I don't know about the pavilion, but the insulation, again, finance committee wasn't in support of that project either.
Right, but, yeah, that's, that's going to be done. I mean, at some point, stuff has to be replaced.
I don't think it was in bad shape, and I know you talked about moving it four foot back, and that kind of goes into part of the, the whole frisbee golf thing, too.
Right, it, it'll stay where the location is, it's just going to be, so, well, I think the fence will just be replaced.
Well, I thought the whole point of you replacing the fence was because you wanted to push it back because people were running into it.
I don't know if Cory's going to fix it.
Well, we agree with that, which is why we didn't think the project was necessary.
Have you seen the fence?
I took pictures of it. I sent it to all the council back in October, November.
I thought the finance said, no, you know. Yeah, otherwise there's no sense committee saying anything.
We can leave the fence, but I, I'm telling you, the backstops, I believe, need to be taken care of on the ball fields.
Oh, no, I took pictures of it. It seemed like a lot of the fencing coming off from the bottom post, but the post is still in the dirt from all the pictures I had.
It's just, it's just all bent out. I missed the original fencing.
Yeah. That was one question I had on.
And then I have to get back to you because Kim pointed it out to me. I was sick here a couple of weeks. I did not get with the Alexa pole for the fire department. I did talk to, real quick, I did talk to Rick, but I was going to check with the officers. I don't think it's been used in years.
No. We used it for six months.
Yeah, when, I think, one of your past chiefs started it up and then it stopped.
Cory was told that he had to have it.
Right, but I know.
Six months and.
But it does help us with our performance comp.
Ohio plan.
Ohio plan, so it's part of that system to help us save some money on that, but I still need to get with Derek on that to see if it's something that they should be using and keep up to date with compliance and regulations and everything, so. If he's not going to use it, though, I mean, I can't see why we're still paying for it.
Yeah, I'd like to know what, what the Ohio plan saves us versus paying thirty-two hundred bucks, or I'd use something.
But I will get with him. I know he's been doing some runs, he's been busy, but.
He won't, he won't be available again until Friday?
He's working full staff, working.
Cheryl, I had a question about the physicals. Is that the going rate of a physical these days?
Oh, yeah.
Is that everywhere, or can we shop around? I know we went to Paulding for some.
We have Paulding, Defiance, Bryan, they're all within a few dollars of each other.
Wow. So sticker shop.
Tyrion, we used to just get a plain old physical, now they don't. It's all day with the whole nine yards, like the PD.
Okay.
Doug, and I get the name wrong because I keep changing names, they're going to change it again. It's going to be Marathon Ever.
Don't ask me.
Ever, what's Evergreen now, I think, right? Do they do that?
Evergreen.
Right? Because they're going to.
Riverside.
They do not do that, okay. But there, that's, that's places we can go there for other things, but I don't know if they offer that. But they're changing it to Marathon, I believe, coming up here soon, so. Any other questions about the bills? Motion to pay, or?
I still don't like paying for that one. So how's this work?
Well, what's the cost of the, do you remember, what's the backstops versus the fence for by Froggy Park along North Main Street?
I know the total, obviously the total is twenty-five thousand and some change. I want to say the backstops were right about four thousand apiece. And that's pretty well dug out to dug, dug out to dug out, and probably about ten feet.
The fence along Main Street, is that a taller fence, or you went taller, or is it about the same height?
Yeah, it was going to be a four footer.
Oh, it's shorter. I just had noticed when I went down there with the frisbee golf, a lot of frisbee went out to the right into the road. I'm just waiting for a car to get tagged by one, because I'm just saying.
It's going to happen.
Yep.
Yeah, North Main Street, venture placement, eleven thousand six hundred back in October. And baseball backstops was fourteen thousand one hundred. I mean, if I, if I'm getting a choice, I'm, I prefer to fix the backstops. They're going, they're going to get used a lot more than what the fencing on North Main Street is.
It is council decision if you want a motion to, to pay a portion of the fencing, or pay what's brought to you, or. I mean, that's your choice in the end.
I'll make most pay the bills, but only pay to have the backstops done on the three fields and not the one on North Main Street.
I'll take a bet. What was finance's reasoning for not wanting all the fencing done? Do you remember?
Well, it was more cosmetic, I thought, for the baseball. I'm not saying it wasn't a little bit of safety, but I thought it could have been fixed. Like, like whoever they hired as a park director can come in and reattach some of the fence back down. I mean, they're, they make the metal ties to wrap the fence back. I mean, the playground fence at the school always comes off the post, and every summer it's on that list of things to do. And you can see the post along the dirt, it's just covered in dirt, you got to dig up around the dirt to wrap the fence back down, and so to me, it's a lot of cosmetic stuff.
Well, there's a motion, a second, roll call.
Bailey?
No.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Um, council or board of commissioners report, there was none in the packets. Uh, council committee reports. Any committees coming up?
We're in the near future. Got to wait for Ron, because I want the personnel. But I got to wait for dates, he hasn't responded to the email, and thought I'd see him tonight, didn't know he was going to be here, so.
Can you ever get back about any of this? Because I know you've been requesting one.
He was, he had just said that, you know, but what he's got going on right now was kind of, kind of hard, so.
Is it something that needs addressed before he gets back?
Well, I only think, I don't think he's going to, you mean Ron?
Yeah.
I don't think he's going to be gone long, it was just for.
Well, he's been requesting meetings for weeks.
Right, right.
So I don't.
I'm good any day throughout the weekend after five, at five-thirty, so.
I'll let you decide the importance. I don't know how to proceed with that if he.
Well, we talked tonight, maybe bring it to committee, what his thing is with the pay scheduling and stuff like that, what he wants to address, so. I'd ask him if he took it to committee first and then got, got your input, and then brought the rest of council. Because I think we've been talking, we've had some, I want to come to it too, but we've been with the town boards, and we have some county meetings and stuff, so address some of those at our committee meetings, so. But yeah, if we can get Ron here, within, get a meeting scheduled in the next, what, five, six days before, before next council, we'd like that. Makes sense. Administrator's report.
Um, all I have is, I did hold interviews last week for a parks director. I interviewed six different people. And at this time, I'd like to recommend that we hire Christina Tedson for our parks director.
What, had her, like, was her standout qualities? I mean, she didn't back my.
I'm doing a very good job of selling her to us.
Sell.
I think with her experiences she has at the school will help come into play. I, she, um, you know, she's, she's done the mowing, she's done trimming. She's got a slave driver for her boss currently, so she knows what it's like, and that's true. I just think she had more experience than what our other candidates did. We did have one really good candidate, but he, I originally offered to, but he did not take that. I think Christina would be good. Once, once, and hopefully when the pool gets up and running, I think she'd be a good fit for somebody to oversee the lifeguards there as well. Eric?
She does a great job at the school cleaning, and she's always busy. She works second, third shift right now. Her, she mows, she always volunteers to mow in the summer. She helps paint football fields, line, pull lines and everything. Biggest thing, you know, when I talked to Cory about it was just, I thought, at one time, he was looking for somebody a lot more mechanical, electrical, you know, type of ability. I mean, the barn, he wanted to put heat in and insulate it so they could service their own equipment and do repairs, and I don't know how much of that she'll be able to do personally.
She, she says she, I asked her about servicing mowers, and she's told me she's done basic service on mowers. She tells me she changes the oil in her vehicle and everything. If you can do that, you can service a lawn mower.
She aware that weekends and holidays are going to be thing? I know the HBA planned their All-Star tournament on July 4th.
Yep, yep.
So she's already aware that that'll be part of this?
Yeah, I told her it's just not, you know, seven-thirty to four, Monday through Friday. It could be, you could be there late evenings, you might be there on Saturdays, taking care of fields or doing whatever needs to be done, so.
Is she also aware that this is a hybrid position and that she'll potentially have to do snow removal and leaf pickup and?
If everybody was told the same rigmarole.
Um, have you looked into, I mean, I know we haven't approved a pool, but have you looked into what certifications this director will have to get and to be able to do that?
Like a pool operator's license?
I just, I just remember working down there that, you know, Ron always had all of his hanging up, so that when the health department showed up, he had proof that he had that. I don't remember what they were. But obviously whoever is in that position would have to go and get that schooling and take those tests.
Yeah, I do have some paperwork. Actually, Cheryl, I was going back and forth today with the stuff that Montpelier, the city or the village of Montpelier mandates that their parks director has to have for their pool.
Okay, and she's aware that those would be certifications she'd have to obtain?
Correct. She knows, not exactly which ones they are, but she knows that there is certifications that it's going to.
Right, and I cannot remember what they said.
Do you have any seasonal people lined up for anything, or interviews, applications? I, I just put the ad to the West Bend today to run it for a few weeks for a couple of part-time seasonal people. I know Carson Shaw, who's been down there with Gary and Val, actually reached out today and said he'd like to come back again, but, you know, going to have to apply like everybody else, so. I'm hoping that we can, we can find some good seasonal people, so they're all going to work together well and help her out as well.
Especially, he's done it the past couple of years, too.
Yeah, personally, he would be very beneficial.
Oh, yeah, he would be, because he knows how to land all the fields and.
Correct.
And he'd be actually probably training her.
Could be, if he got hired.
And you're hiring two part-timers, right?
Yeah.
Well, Cory asked for, this is Ms. Tasson, right?
Christina.
Christina.
Her sick time carries over from what she'd have built up at the school. Make sure Cheryl's aware of all.
I think we've, yeah, that's a mess what we've done with other.
Maybe just don't make sure she's aware.
Think about that.
Yeah.
Motion to hire her as full-time park director?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Um, next on the agenda is the solicitor report.
We have final reading of resolution 2025-01 by caption, only authorizing the sale of unneeded obsolete or rented village personal property including by internet auction for the calendar year 2025.
Let's move.
Second. Roll call.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Second reading of resolution 2025-03 by caption, only authorizing fiscal officer to enter contract with KS State Bank to finance purchase of fire turnout gear and declaring an emergency.
I'll make most to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Second, or third and final reading of resolution 2025-03 by caption, only authorizing fiscal officer to enter contract with KS State Bank to finance purchase of fire turnout gear and declaring emergency.
So move, second. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Neverly? Oh, Bailey? Everyone, Bailey?
Yes.
Second reading of resolution 2025-04 by caption, only appointing Mike Barth and Cory Wan to serve on the TIRC on behalf of the village of Hicksville and declaring emergency.
I'll move, suspend the rules. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Third and final reading of resolution 2025-04 by caption, only appointing Mike Barth and Cory Wan to serve on the TIRC on behalf of the village of Hicksville and declaring emergency.
So move. Second.
And roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
First reading. First reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five by caption, only authorizing the village administrator to enter into a contract with Rob Rose Brock Incorporated for construction of a pool and pool house and declaring an emergency.
Really needs to be any emergency, I wouldn't mind having all the council here to vote.
I'd like to see financials ahead of time.
That's the numbers that I have.
Well, I've been asking for them for weeks, interest rates, terms, number of payments, how many years?
It's only been a week.
January twenty-first.
But.
That's when I did my minutes.
When they do the vote.
Still waiting.
Then we'll do the contracts. They have a range from four point two five to five point nine five.
How long, how many years, what's monthly payment?
Ten years. Ten years.
Either one, all those early, okay.
Yeah, and it's the one point five that we're taking.
Four point two five to what?
Five point nine five, sorry.
Five point nine five, seven five?
Five point nine five down to four point two five.
Okay, those are only local banks or out-of-town banks?
Um, local and out-of-town.
Well, let's just say, of course, I'm gonna go the lowest interest rate, uh, what would be the monthly payment?
Um, it's going to be, it depends on how you write it up, which will be it after you decide if you're gonna do it or not. But you can get a construction loan for like the first twelve months, because it's probably how long it's gonna take to do construction, then it will roll over into a fixed rate for the rest of the time.
Fixed rate of, fixed rate of the four point two five is.
So is the interest rate higher or lower during that twelve months though?
Same.
Same.
Same, no.
So what would be the monthly payment?
Um, the monthly payment is gonna be like thirteen thousand. And then when it goes into the fixed rate, it will be, um, semi, twice a month, twice a year. And he said he will do it when our tax comes in, in March and September.
I have a question about this, um, this is for the contractual for the pool build, but do you have to do another resolution for whatever bank you decide to go with?
Right.
Figure number, so.
Yeah, cause they'll write a contract.
Right, so this, right, cause that's a whole nother part of the resolution.
Well, does that need to be done first then?
It's all discussion with building the pool, I mean, I mean, if you're on board to build a pool, you're gonna build a pool, I mean, the second round would be picking the right bank and the right rates to go along with the bill, you already know how much you're gonna borrow.
Does it have to be an emergency? You never answer.
We're, we're beyond our thirty-day window since the bid came in.
It's been screwed up some from day one.
I'd like to have all six of us here to vote on it.
I won't be here at the next meeting.
Sorry.
A minute, Martin?
And I asked, I asked Cheryl today before council, if we had a situation with this whole, the pool decision and everything, cause it's, it's a big decision. Um, I think it's an asset for the community, but to have full council, I mean, if we need to do a special meeting, we need to do a special meeting, but I mean, the rub doesn't like that.
No, this is what I would have.
I'm, I'm fine having a special meeting, I just, like, how much of this, how much contingency money is set aside for the project or is that?
I can get that in the package.
Uh, bid, grant, funding one point five million. Full projection, but we're projected to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the splash pad and we have to pay two eighty-nine. So that's a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars more than we planned on paying.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, well, just making sure it doesn't repeat itself, you know, history repeats itself.
I thought the grant was seven fifty. You have to pay them fifteen thousand out of it, oh, so it's kinda like the firefighter one is. They deduct it from their trust.
That's good, at least they'll know they get theirs first, right?
Okay, now, where do you, where do you show contingency?
Some people got seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's a hell of a lot better than seven fifty-five.
Contingency, where do you show that at?
What contingency, what are you talking about?
So when they bid on a project, like, let's say the school has on the fieldhouse and they say it's six million dollars, they actually think it's gonna be five and a half million dollars, but they set aside five hundred thousand dollars for contingency money in case you go over the engineer's estimate. So how much contingency money does Rob Rose Brock have figured in on this for six mo? So we're not getting, that's what I was asking for, contingency money, what, is nowhere listed?
Yeah, the, the latest number was three, three million five hundred fifty-five thousand, that is what.
With any contingency in there at all, or point percent contingency, zero percent?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing any type of contingency number on top of that.
Cause anything that, that goes over their costs, it's all on us, it's not coming out of, we already had preset aside for it.
So what's the new number?
Three million five hundred and fifty-five thousand, and that was with all those additional changes that had to happen, this was, there were the, the three point four nine nine.
So there are resolutions, not right anyways?
Yeah.
Correct.
Numbers keep changing every time, and I don't know how we've been working with the contractor changing things, we don't have a contract.
It's one of the five six. I mean, we, yeah, we don't have a contract, so that's.
So how are we changing numbers and dealing with them?
Well, this is, the, the three five five is what we're, is what I had mentioned last time where things had to change and it was gonna go up even more money.
Proximity and larger restrooms and bathrooms.
Yes, yes, yes.
But that's not what reflects on the resolution.
That changes it. Are they gonna have to resubmit plans for that added bathroom sizes and roof slope?
Yeah, them and six mo's have already, they've already sent all that to the state.
And what's that costing?
That's all part of this, uh, that's, six mo's, six mo's not charging us anything additional there because of how things went down with the splash pad.
So they're paying all the inspection fees and all that?
Yeah, the only thing additional we've spent now was like a hundred and, a hundred and thirty dollars for a fee, which is a drop in the bucket.
No, but is this three five 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 gonna keep changing, that's what scares me.
That was, that's the latest and greatest number.
If I'm buying a house, I wanna know what.
But there's probably potential for it to change until we lock in, right? Or can they still change it even after we've?
I mean, there's always change orders, change orders are good, sometimes for the bad, I mean, it's just hard to do in construction, unfortunately.
A change order, change order is not a good word in construction. Costs you a lot of money to have changes done, but normally when you take something away, it's like pennies on the dollar.
Right.
So it's council's choice, I mean, if you guys wanna vote tonight or if you wanna have a special meeting and have Ron here, let's have numbers, it's.
Well, I think we need to have a definite number.
Yeah, a motion as it is, yeah.
I think we need to have a special meeting, find out when everyone can be there, uh, have the updated resolution with the right dollar amount, with everything spelled out for the monthly fees and, I know Cheryl feels comfy with that thirteen thousand, time twelve months and just double checking all that. I don't care which bank it is, I just like the lower interest rate, so.
I like that four point two five.
Yeah, I like that four point two five, because a year ago this time, we were talking eight, something. Close to eight.
Are you? You gotta check, we're past that line with Rose Brock, I mean, are they gonna go this week?
Yeah, legally, they don't have to hold their number, but they're willing to hold their number. I can call them tomorrow, but I like to kinda give them some type of date.
We have kicked this can down the road so many times, it is time to make a decision.
Sure we do.
But this, this pool can's been kicked down for years and years and years, and I, I do think it's an asset, we wanna make sure our numbers are right, um, the contingency, if we can find out if that's built into the three five, right?
Yeah.
And if there's a couple hundred thousand built into that, um.
Maybe there isn't.
My recommendation would be to.
There is, I think, if you remember with six mo', I feel like.
I could think they had like a twenty percent.
Ten to twenty percent, depending on what the line item was, so I think it's in there.
I think if we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it, we got that seven hundred fifty thousand hundred grant, not gonna get that, if you turn that down in the future, future projects are gonna look back at this and not give us money in the future if you don't accept it and spend what they give us now.
You still wanna wait to make a vote then?
Well, when you guys make a motion, a second, I'll vote one way or the other.
All right, I make a motion, suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
No.
When can we meet, when can we have a special meeting, well, you have time to get your stuff.
Schedule for Monday night?
I have everything in writing, do you, I mean, I have.
Well, he needs to find out the contingency and stuff and.
With the banking.
When will that really be available?
I don't know, I can check, yeah, I don't know, I didn't get, uh, check with him after, like I said, he was, had something done, so. We could either try to schedule it yet this week or, I mean, depending on your schedules. Thursday night, Friday night, Monday night?
Can't do Thursday.
I can't do this.
I mean, I could do it like six, but I got an appointment at five thirty.
Next Monday at six o'clock?
Yeah.
That good with everybody? You check with them? And all we're gonna address is the pool finances and approval. I have to get with them and, I don't know.
Thanks for checking around the banks.
That is February twenty-fourth. All right, department heads, uh, police, Fisher, you got anything?
No, he's tied up on something.
Thank you, Fisher. Bruce?
Unfortunately, you guys don't get to stay here this time, um, so, just to give you guys a little bit of, uh, heads up, five-ten is going in tomorrow for, uh, of course, we looked at, uh, we went to take off with it the other night and we had a bunch of white smoke coming out of the exhaust. Uh, enough to where you couldn't see behind us, uh, we have checked the oil, uh, we didn't see any antifreeze or anything in it, so it's going out tomorrow, uh, plus it's getting an oil change, you know, uh, routine maintenance. The classes, the two classes are going to be finishing up, uh, next month, um, in fact, uh, I talked to a couple of people last night and they said that they should be able to take their final exam for the, for the basic class right around March twelfth. Which, if that's the case and, and their class time is all done, they could take their national registry and you could have some new EMTs by the thirty-first of March, so. I have talked to a couple of paramedics, um, in the past couple of days that might be interested in coming over here as a part-time, on a part-time basis. I told them what we had available and they have to think about it. Uh, so far this year, we've had a hundred and five runs, um, which, uh, just for, just for your information, uh, February twenty-eighth of last year, we had a hundred and two, so we are well ahead. We are, we are going to be well ahead of where we're at, where you are. I'm projecting to be probably around that seven thirty to seven fifty range this year, could be higher, you know, depending, um, but other than that, um, that's pretty much all I got until we get a chance to, until I get a chance to speak with P F E, so.
How many people are sitting for that test?
Depends on how many people pass class, so.
I knew that the number, you were expecting it to maybe be a little bit lower.
Well, so right now, all seven are still in the class. All seven are still in the class, all seven are doing very well in the class.
Good.
The three that are in the advanced class are, all three are doing very, very exceptionally well there too, so, um, no later than, no later than April thirtieth, we will have, I'm, I'm hoping we will have seven brand-new EMTs and three, uh, brand-new advanced. And just on a personal note, I hope to have about three more paramedics as well, because, uh, I'm getting tired of running seven days a week, so, um, but that's something that I'd wanna bring up during P F E, you know, as well. Not that there's anything to hide it, just bump some stuff off of you guys, so. Other than that, uh, other than that, you know, um, we've been, a majority of our calls have been all going to Parkview. They, they have gotten to know us on a first-name basis over there, so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, uh, you know, during the winter weather that we've been experiencing here lately, uh, it seems that our call volume, uh, kinda stays, stays about the same. But our actual time, turnaround time is obviously extended, you know, by at least half an hour or so, so. But with that being said, that's all I have for right now.
A real quick though to add to your, um, me and Bruce met up with, um, Farmer, township, and we also met with, um.
Mark Township.
Mark Township, we had great meetings with them, told them the situation, uh, they appreciated us coming over, gave them an update on the, um, what's going on within the village and within the department, but we told them, we prepare when the contracts come around with our, um, upstaging our staffing, to run volumes, run calls, direction and all that, so. We'll probably be definitely looking at their contracts, so give them a heads up, but they were thankful that we were able to have better coverage for their areas and everything, we're meeting with Milford next month, they couldn't meet this month, so.
I, I think the biggest thing to take away from the two township meetings that we've had is they did not realize that our run volume, they, they thought it would increase, they just didn't think that it would increase as much as it has. So, you know, and, um, there are some other things that are happening that we need to address, um, I don't know if we've seen the helicopter, uh, we had to land the helicopter, um, Monday, right, right there, um, at the high school. Because of that, because of the facility right there, um, they have, they have some patients that have equipment that we do not have, so if you happen to see the helicopter coming into, coming into town, it's because we can't transport them. Without, without there being some issues, so.
Or buy you some more equipment for the squad.
Yeah, yeah, um, speaking of which, speaking of which, we did get, uh, some equipment from the auction, uh, we got, got a couple of new pumps, so that's, that's a good thing, you know, thank, thank Cory for, uh, bidding on that stuff for us. But, uh, you know, we did get some new equipment, uh, I have these new dogs, and, um, I think that's going to be a benefit going down the road. And I'm looking at, uh, getting a grant through Zoll for a new, uh, for a new vent, um, that's one of the things that we need to severely look at. Cause a new vent is right around that thirty to fifty thousand dollar range, so we're looking at trying to get a grant for that. I know there's a couple of grants that Cheryl and I have looked at as far as the normal grants that we have, and, um, we're giving, getting those put in, so, um, trying to, trying to get as much grant money as we possibly can.
And also, uh, Michelle from Medi-Cal, I know when we talked to her a couple of months back, she said usually it comes about a year into the process to get everything acclimated with the system, so she was planning on maybe coming to council in March or April and kinda give us an update about the billing.
Yeah, she was, she was actually wanting to come this month, but, um, her schedule kinda got, kinda got thrown sideways with some other stuff, so.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce.
Anything else on Ryan, dude?
Same old, it's issues, new month.
Um, and, administrator, maybe not administrator, financial report, Cheryl?
Uh, but you have included the January mayor's court collections and police department, and I have two votes in the, one cemetery board is on.
And I have two votes in the, one cemetery board is wanting an increase. It doesn't say when they want it because twenty-one four arcade is a red dot. So I need to know if you want to, um, if it's not going to be till next year, they could actually discuss it when they come in their regular meeting in May. So I can find that out if you want, if you have more questions about why they want an increase.
I understand why they want the increase, it's just not the right timing to come in after we already set our budgets for the year. So, I mean, I didn't, I would personally entertain it for next year, but I wouldn't vote for it for this year.
I know that figure, the twenty, what was it, like twenty-four?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I'm sorry. Um, that's been there for a long time, so. Um, I talked to one of their board members about it and everything, I wasn't sure if there was something could get done yet this year because of budgets being done, so. I should come up and address that.
Yeah, it says twenty percent, doesn't say when, but I talked to Robin and he gave more details about it, and if we can wait till May, we can do it during the regular meeting. So, anybody okay with that? All right, and lastly, request for liquor license at Dollar General. Um, with the code, it's for, um, of course, period only wine, not beer. And I need you guys to let me send it in or ask for a theory, or what do you wanna do?
I remember years ago, we voted no for it, and, but I, I remember we voted no because there's, we had some family-owned businesses in town that were done a lot for the community, that'll, you know, always sponsor for all the baseball, softball, all that kind of stuff, did stuff for the school. They're all family-owned and those are no longer family-owned in town for the most part. I don't have any other location to sell beer in town. I have a few spots, but.
I wouldn't just approve on.
Just wine.
For the cheese factory, not that long ago.
Yeah, Hershburgers, yeah, that was six months ago. Boxed wine and beer. This is wine, wine mixed drinks.
Council decision?
Take it down? I'm okay with it. Yes. As long as they have it chipped out. Sorry, you're next on my list.
You can't, you can't roll it like, can you?
I've got abstain on it.
Is that a motion? You gotta have a motion on that, Cheryl, uh?
Roll them.
It's a famous draw.
Oh, Cheryl, thank you, Cheryl. Mike, turn it real quick. Uh, real quick, there was a four-county meeting in four since I was sick, I was not able to attend, but, um, February is also been, it's a proclamation, February is, uh, Career and Technical Education Month. Uh, they host a, a luncheon every day to go through the school and show all the vocational services that they offer the students in our, our, uh, different counties that belong there, but, uh, and, just a proclamation, Career and Technical Education Month, in Hicksville, are we all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education programs in this community and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Um, I happen to set my hand, cause to be affixed this great seal of the Village of Hicksville, and I will sign this and return it back to the four-county. We don't need to keep this, it goes back to them, so. We recognize their services for our students and teaching them the trades and vocational, so we appreciate their, their time and, um, everything they do at four-county. So, and that is kind of a couple minutes. Maybe I lost them. Yep, hear my report. I just wanted to send out basically, um, adultists to the Robert Meyer family for the loss of Bob. Uh, a big part of our family for years, his wife Janice was mayor for a long time, but, uh, prayers and, and, um, thoughts for the, the Meyer family for the passing of Bob here. Um, again, the blood screening is coming up at the Park Pavilion, uh, February twenty-sixth through March first, take advantage of that. Get some great discounts on some different levels of blood screening. Um, you don't have to make an appointment, you just show up there at the Village Park Pavilion, uh, note dates. Uh, March seventh is Inclusion Day here at Defiance County. Um, the Defiance County Board of Developmental Disabilities is asking everyone to wear purple and decorate their houses and their businesses, uh, in purple to show support to the, for those who have disabilities. Uh, March is National Developmental Disability Awareness Month, so we reach out to them and show their support for that. Um, the new website is now up and running. Um, I don't know if you've checked it out yet, it's, uh, pretty cool. Um, I wanted to thank Drew Wertz, um, Cory was a part of that, April, she's gonna help kinda do some changes to it, or updates and different things, and then Cheryl was a big part of that, so, um, check it out, the new village website is active. We appreciate that and it's up and running, so. And then a reminder to the residents and businesses to shovel their sidewalks in front of their houses and businesses and, um, thanking all the, this Lee's Fire EMS. Um, you guys have been running a lot, so, you know, out and about, water main breaks, but, uh, we ask people to shovel their sidewalks, um, and, and check on your neighbors too during the cold months, you know, they'll be out there and if they need some help or groceries, you know, uh, reach out to them, so, if you need anything, let me check on you, you can, you're a little older than I am.
I take care of my neighbors.
That's good, I know, I was just checking on you.
Some of them.
So, you know, watch out for your neighbors and help them out, but, uh, we appreciate that. I gave you real quick, uh, Brian Verizon contract we need to sign off on that, Rachel, I had talked to Cory about that, so you get the road moved. Uh, we're to that point, and then also, I asked Keller, um, Michael Walworth, his, I set a agreement in front of you. They had an agreement years ago when we first started talking about the industrial site for Keller. Um, they revamped it, changed the dates and made a couple revisions to it, um, but I want all the council to be able to look at that. Uh, Cheryl made you, made you a copy, put that in your packet tonight, so by that, that is all I have. Um, anything else for council this evening?
I'd like to call for an executive session, purchase or sale of property.
Is there a motion going into executive session?
No, could you piggyback out of number eight?
Would you like to read and read aloud?
Well.
Confidence in business information on the economic.
What is it?
Well, it's about, I didn't know if there's any updates from Erica and the legal opinion that we got from Rachel. Unless we can talk about that in public, which I don't care if we do.
I'm meeting with Erica tomorrow, like via.
Maybe next meeting.
That was what worked with in my schedule, so.
Well, then we don't need it for that then.
Yeah.
And we are meeting next Monday.
We are meeting next Monday at six o'clock for.
I'll make a motion or second that.
Richard here?
I don't know if anyone.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Bagley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Take care, everyone.